Sir here Derek's missing, we'll gavel a meeting to order and stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. Great, thank you very much. We have a number of things to work on here this evening and we'll start with the district highlights. And we will begin with a highlight called Board Member Appreciation. And what I would like to say is this is your life Jamie. No, this is Jamie Morford's last meeting after having served on the board for 12 years. And we are all going to greatly miss him. There are a few people here who would like to say a couple of things to Jamie and about Jamie. And for our community to know what kind of board member he's been and sort of memorialize things. So I sent a text out to a few former board members and I received some nice replies of people's memory of working with Jamie. And Kellyanne Ergerson just this afternoon sent in this comment, Jamie is the living embodiment of a humble leader. He's the first to defer to the experts while acknowledging his limited experience of understanding of the subject at hand, even if he knows a great deal on the subject. But here's Jamie's secret power. He has an advanced understanding of people, being an exceptional listener. And has loads of empathy, both of which add to his influence as a school board member. When Jamie speaks, his words carry extra weight because he doesn't particularly enjoy hearing himself talk. I can't thank Jamie enough for his support through the years, especially with the Seela Aquatic Center. Jamie is a credit to the Seela community. And she was a president before Jeff was the president of the board. First president, your second president Jeff Hartwick said, it was a sincere privilege to serve on the board with Jamie for 10 years. What I really admire and appreciate about Jamie is that he looks beyond the immediate and sees the bigger picture, always viewing things with a wide lens and a keen interest in how a decision, an issue, an opportunity would impact others beyond the primary group. As a board member, he constantly offered healthy perspective that helped others think deeper in an effort to ensure the board's decisions serve the best interest of all involved. The collaborative nature of Jamie's approach instilled a sense of team and created synergy among members of the board and administration to produce results in alignment with the principles of the district and betterment of our community. You can tell it's Jeff's because it's longer than Kellyanne's. Jamie's, 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 our dinner is getting cold Jeff. Jamie's tenure on the board is one to be remembered with honor and gratitude for his incredible contributions and steadfast dedication to the Seela School District and the students and parents the district serves. Thank you, Jamie. And as your current board president, I'll just say what I said to you on the phone the other day, which is you really are my role model on the board. The thing that Kellyanne said about when you speak, it carries extra weight, not just because of the length of time that you've served on the board, but because of the credibility and trust that you've built with members of the board and members of the community. I, you may disagree with this, you shouldn't. I've always thought you're the smartest person on the board based on, yeah, I knew you'd do that. Based on the questions that you ask and the comments that you make, they just cut right to the heart of things. And I've just really enjoyed serving with you on the board. There are maybe a few other comments that people would like to make?
Jamie, I spoke the other day as well, but I just quickly wanted to, we definitely agree with everything that everybody has said. I'm gonna miss you. I appreciate, I didn't realize it was 12 years. For some reason I thought it was only 10, but I mean 12 years, the legacy knowledge that we're losing with you leaving the board is just, it's gonna take years to make up for that loss. You will be missed and I appreciate you. You know, this is sometimes a thankless role, but we do very much appreciate that you put the time in, so thank you.
Jamie, wow. I got to go to school with a couple of your siblings and love and respect them as well and then working with you on the board is just for the reinforce that your parents did one heck of a job. I think my favorite part about you and how, what I've learned from you that I hope other people could glean from you as well is being like practicing cultural relativism, being steadfast and stern in your beliefs, but also being willing to listen and have your mind changed and learn new things and see the world in different ways. And I think that's a very powerful trait and I admire that in you.
And I believe we may have an audience.
So I'm Shane Backland, I was a former superintendent here and I remember actually swearing Jamie in 12 ago. You looked a lot different. Remember the picture?
Looked the same.
No, but I, everything that was said, I totally agree with. And I think one of the things that people don't know about Jamie, he he cares a lot about this community. I know he knows that, but he cares a lot about people as was said. I think during the pandemic, when there were some dark days and dark times, Jamie would always reach out, text, call me, check in how I was doing. That meant a lot. So I've watched you bros as a leader as well and I appreciated that. 12 years, man. You've got, what, two kids married now? You guys give them all diplomas?
Yep. Well, COVID was kinda had to watch from the sideline a little bit.
But I just want to make sure I was here to say how much I appreciated you.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you Shane.
And Derek?
Just real briefly, like Joe, I know your family and totally have to agree with them on the way your parents have raised you. Unfortunately, that demeanor doesn't rub off on me. But yeah, thank you for all the service that you've provided to the school district and to Seela.
Thank you Derek. And I'll finish with Kevin here unless Chris, do you want to add anything here?
Because I just want to say to Jamie, one thing that I really appreciated about working with you over the years is you asked a lot of really good questions. I'm speaking about the financial position of the district, the processes we went through. I appreciate you caring as much as you have and helped us keep the student impact at the core of our decisions. And I just want to thank you. Appreciated working with you Jamie.
For all of those in the audience that don't know about school board, it is an elected position. It's an official position. Jamie was first elected in 2013. Things have changed a little bit in that short amount of time. Jamie was re-elected, initially elected and then re-elected for two more four-year terms. And he has served this community, this school district for 12 years, three terms as a school board. That in itself is an accomplishment. But when you start to do the math a little bit, the amount of commitment it takes to be a school board member and somebody said it's a thankless position and I agree, there are times that it is thankless. These are not paid positions. It is basically volunteer for the betterment of our students, our schools and our communities. But each year, the board formally gathers for official meetings, whether it's a study session or a meeting like tonight, 20 times during the course of one year. When you multiply that by 12 years, Jamie has spent 240 either early mornings or late evenings in school board meetings. That's not to count the number of hearings or miscellaneous other meetings the board gets into, which I would assume now takes that closer to 260 to 275 or more approaching 300 times that he's gathered together to support and to make the better, the betterment of our schools and our community. That in itself says a lot about his commitment and the time that he's invested in our schools and our community to support students, just like many of you out in the audience and all the others who have walked across the stage and got a diploma during his time. I think Jamie would say that is one of the most rewarding parts of being a school board member. I know as a superintendent is graduation and being able to see students accomplish their goals and get that diploma in their hand. I like Shane and being the superintendent, have a relationship as a professional relationship with each and every one of you. But the amount of time we spend together also turns that professional relationship into a personal relationship. So as a superintendent, the professional part, Jamie, thank you for all of your years of service and for the students. But on the personal level, thank you as well. It's been a great, enjoyable four years working with you and best of luck. And for all those 240 plus meetings, you get some tokens of appreciation. The first is we give you your best photographed picture that you can.
I think my wife does too.
Jamie, here is your picture. I don't know what you're gonna do with that. I'll leave that up to you. Think this picture actually needs to be with the board. Okay. And then it says Jamie Morford, Seela School Board Member 2013 to 2025. Thank you for your outstanding contribution to the schools of the Seela School District. Jamie, congratulations. Yeah, if you can get, maybe figure out a way to get one with the board.
Thank you for coming Shane, appreciate it.
Yes Shane, thank you for coming. Thank you all. It's been a pleasure serving with everybody here. On top of the note from Kellyanne and Jeff, I also served with Kathy Lambert and Norma. And they were, they'd been in the board longer than me and they were my kind of, my guiding light. So I appreciate, you know, them back in the day too. And thank you guys. It's awesome. It's 12 years, just some of you guys were in kindergarten, first grade, you know, and I had three kids in school and now I got two kids married and one kid working for me. So there's been changes all around. We've got three new buildings, two major remodels in that time. So stuff to be proud of and we felt like we've accomplished a lot and you guys have work to do. So thank you everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you Jamie. All right, wow, excellent. Thank you. We have another district highlight. Kevin, would you like to tell us about the Seela Cross Country Team?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it maybe it seems to be like this happens all the time, but I, I hope that people realize that this is like, this doesn't happen all the time to most schools in our state, regardless of their classification. We had our girls team finish seventh, which is an accomplishment all in itself. Because if you know anything about how cross-country works, in order to get a seventh place team, you have to have contributions from the entire team in order to collect the number of points in order to do that. You could have, in some cases, you may have some runners that are the fastest runners, but that doesn't really have a huge impact on the team award, which in many times we don't associate cross-country as much as a team sport. But I will tell you here in Seela, it's a team sport. It's coached as a team sport, the athletes buy in as a team sport. It is truly a team sport for our, so for our girls who two of the members of that team are right there to have the season that you have and then to finish on the high note of that seventh place finish is quite an accomplishment. So congratulations to you. What also makes it interesting and probably especially is that we have a boys team also that did exactly the same thing. They finished fifth as a team. Again, it took the entire team to get that fifth place. Even the last timed person coming in for that team had a huge impact on getting that team trophy of fifth place. So to have a girls team in seventh and a boys team in fifth, an overall huge accomplishment for the cross-country program at our high school, but also definitely for our whole athletic program. So congratulations ladies who are part of that team, any of you if you're a part of that team, but also for all the athletes, coaches and the parents and the community members who supported that in their efforts. So congrats.
Fantastic. Yeah, nice work. Charlie or Claire, do you want to say anything about your race? Well, tell us about the cross-country family.
Oh, well, thank you for shining us out. We really appreciate that. And just like Mr. McKay said, it really is like a whole team thing. And that's one of like my favorite experiences like Seela is being able to participate in athletics. And it was my fourth year at the state meet, so it was just a huge, like a huge, it was a really cool moment to wrap it all up. And I'm just really grateful for that experience that I've got to have.
Yeah, same with me. The cross-country team is definitely a family. The coaches and the athletes have done a really good job of fostering that kind of community. So it's been really amazing being on this team and I'm not a state runner, but I was able to go to the state meet. And just being able to see the girls still so supportive and so family-like with one another was just so amazing to watch and see.
And we did have quite like a few like staff members from Seela High School. There was a lot of support from their community and we definitely felt it. So we appreciate that.
That's great. Thank you very much. We normally would have now suggestions and comments from the audience and we're gonna postpone that for just a moment. We have a slight revision to the agenda, which is that we have a class of students here who are seniors, if I'm understanding it correctly, who would like to address the board with a policy proposal. And rather than have them be limited to the three-minute time period, we thought it would be more appropriate for them to have a chance to speak about what they've been working on as part of a class project and also something you deeply believe and hold to be true. If you have individual speakers, that would be great. Or if you have a single, you have two speakers. If you would use the mic up there and hit the button on the mic so that we can all hear you, we would really appreciate it. This also allows us not having it as public comment, this is for the people in the audience, the people up here, to ask you questions for follow-up and kind of have a bit more of a conversation about it.
Okay, okay. So in our American Government class, a part of what we're learning is a dictatorship and like the process that it goes through. It's like voting and like the importance of like a voice when it comes to that. So we had a assignment and it's how to turn a bill into a law. And we were all given a chance to come up with a bill for the school that we want to bring to you guys and make it a law. So like changing a policy or like offering up something that we think would be beneficial for the school. And the bill that we picked that we all kind of thought would be the best to bring and most likely to succeed is off-campus lunch for seniors in particular. So we know that this was readjusted in 2013, but it hasn't been changed. So we wanted to touch on it because it's something that we do actually intend like getting feedback on. So we really appreciate it. At first we didn't know we were gonna get feedback. So thank you guys for doing that. But so basically how it would go is if we were to do it, we'd have a trial with the seniors this year. So every Friday of the last trimester, so we have time to figure stuff out, we would do off-campus lunch. And we'd have to have a parent like permission form at the beginning of the trimester. You'd have to be academically eligible to like leave. So we have grade checks every week for like, or every two weeks for sports. So we do the same thing for off-campus lunch. And then also holding like a 3.0 or higher GPA, just to make sure that the people that are leaving are more responsible and making sure like it's good for like the community. Cause there were some comments in the past. I've heard from like teachers or just like admin that when there was open camp, open campus lunch, excuse me, sorry, that some communities weren't like happy with how the students were disrespecting like kind of the restaurants or their spaces. So that would be a good thing. Some reasons why we think it's beneficial is because if it's just seniors, we're going into like the world, we're gonna go to college, we're gonna go into the workforce. Like there's responsibilities that I feel like we haven't been taught as much like in classroom that like time management and responsibility could be taught like through having like deadlines, like tardies. Like if you were to be tardy during like an off-campus lunch, then you wouldn't get the privilege for like the rest of the trimester. And that's pretty much all I have for you guys. But Gabby has some more information.
So the specific requirements to be eligible for this is students must maintain a 3.0 GPA or higher. Students must have no major disciplinary infractions. And students must submit a signed parental or guardian consent form, which is basically gonna hold the parents or the student reliable. It won't be on the school. And this is them signing off that they agree to having their kids be able to do this. They also will have weekly grade checks like Miley said, and this will be held like the advisors in our classes, like in our school, will be the ones that are like making sure that these are updated. And then all the admin will know so they can see what schools, what students are eligible for this. We also during this project reached out, reached out to other schools that have off-campus lunch, which include Natchez and Zilla. And we got feedback from them to see how they run their off-campus lunches. And it was pretty much the same thing of where they have grade checks and making sure that they have like forms signed from parents and GPA stuff. And then we also have rules about if you're tardy back a certain amount of times after like getting back from lunch, then you will have the privilege revoked.
That's pretty much it. Do you guys have any question?
I do. So have you, did you guys also work with the administration like Mr. Monty?
So we had him come in class and Ms. Forbes, the counselor, to listen to us give like the proposal. And he said that he thinks it's a great idea, but he can't do anything about it because it's like part of a policy. Like not being able to leave school during like lunchtime or just in general. And then also I think it was something about like driving. There were two policies that he couldn't change. So he said to bring it to you guys, but he thinks it's a good idea.
Do you feel like you have support from the administration?
Um, I'd say so.
So I was trying to read real quickly to understand how, how do you perceive this being managed? Like would there be, would you need a staff member to kind of play on the door? Like how, what volume of students? Sure with, you know, seniors, a smaller group, but as it grows, I could see this being, I think of like the younger schools where you're managing recess pick up and drop off. What is that gonna look like at the high school?
Um, so I know we use like Minga a lot and there's like stickers on Minga for like ASB, like when people pay their ASB, you put like that kind of sticker on there. Or like I've gotten like a lunch pass sticker to like approve me to go upstairs during lunchtime. So something I feel like would be good is if we got like one of those stickers like for trimester to like approve a student. Like, just like off-campus lunch.
Like a physical sticker on your ASB?
Yeah, so like on the app, like on the Minga, there's like above, if you press your ID, there's like stickers above your name. And you would just show it to like an administrator or like a person like watching the door when you walk out. And then that'll be like the best way we can manage it because there's still like students for like YVC that like walk in and out. And so that's something that we'd have to talk about more, but that's kind of our best idea at the moment.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's also, we could do, cause I was talking to someone from Othello today who, they also have off-campus lunch and they were given like little cards to swipe into like the buildings. And obviously that isn't like something that we could do because that would like take a lot of money and stuff. But like having a check-in and checkout system could also help keep, keep track of the students that are leaving.
We may have another comment from an audience member.
Currently during lunch, we already have teachers that do watch the parking lot on cameras and they go around in a golf cart to make sure there's not people leaving the campus. We also talked about colored lanyards in cars. So we know who is allowed and which vehicles are allowed to leave during that time. So we do have teachers that are watching the parking lot currently. So I think that would also help.
And your proposal is for all four grades to be able to leave?
Just seniors.
Seniors forever. You said that was a trial, you would be seniors. Are you thinking it would expand after this year?
Um, no. So like this year, it'd be just seniors, of course, but like the trial would be just Fridays.
Gotcha.
And when it extends into like the next year, it wouldn't be just Fridays and it would stay just seniors. Because there's also like with driving, we don't want like lower classmen having to like walk places. And then just like the really, the like places in close vicinity getting like overwhelmed because kids can't drive. So like everybody would walk to River Canyon and then they wouldn't be able to handle that many people. So we definitely get arguments at like if they had that much capacity.
Have you talked to River Canyon?
Um, we did reach out to some. Do you know who that responses from?
So my, in my class each, there were different groups reaching out to like restaurants. They were reaching out to staff members.
I'll get your mic here. There we go.
Oh, I get the famous mic. Okay, so in class, kids were split up into different groups. And there was a group that actually went out and spoke with restaurants and they were all on board. We just didn't have the opportunity to gather all that data. So the community is on board. They said that they would have the staff. The only thing that was ever mentioned as a possible like, the thing that they're worried about is like if there was something that was to occur during that lunchtime in their restaurant that they would want to have that student no longer be able to be participant. So like a major infraction. And we also spoke with all the other staff that do already take on that role of monitoring students during lunchtime. And they were all on board on saying that it would be a great benefit for seniors specifically because we are getting them ready for the adult life. So like, they're like, why not start now? So, and it was something that Monty did come in and he worked with us. He revised everything, gave feedback to all the students before coming here as well. So him and as well as the other admin said that it would be an amazing change.
Other questions for the students?
Yeah, is any, go ahead, Charlie.
No, okay. My question would be like, would the 30-minute lunch period be extended? Because I know it's a really hard thing to manage, like getting in your car, trying to get out of the parking lot. Especially when there's a lot of other seniors trying to get out and then getting to a restaurant, then ordering and then trying to get back before the time limit ends. But also like trying to debate if you want to eat in the restaurant or not. It doesn't seem like a lot of time just for that to be plausible to happen.
Um, I think if we were like, uh, like present to like extend the lunchtime, that'd be great. But right now we were just focusing on like being able to leave. So we would encourage students to order like online so they could go and pick up their meal and they could sit and eat. So it'd be ready like when they leave class, like by the time they get out the parking lot and they get there, it'd be ready. So that'd be like highly encouraged. But as of right now, yes, I think extending the lunch period would be great. But that's not what we were looking at in particular. That's a great question.
You don't have open periods at the high school, but when we were in school, did you have open periods? You had open periods in the school? So you could take a longer lunch if you had fourth period off or something like that. You don't have that so much anymore. Okay.
Any other questions?
I think one step maybe would be to check with the transportation department too. I know we're a fairly fragile system to get everybody to their schools and you know, passer-throughs and stuff. So are there buses going on during whatever lunch period this would be? Might be something to kind of check into. And then I think if you got down the road a little bit, would be kind of fun is doing a, to kind of address Charlie's question is a demo day. You know, have a Saturday where you know, you can get, you kind of ballpark, there's gonna be under 20 students that are gonna do it. Can you get volunteers to see how, how long that process actually takes? And is it doable in a 30-minute time period? But you guys have done a lot of the research. That's awesome.
Maybe a half day. They could try it on a half day and see what happens.
So I really like the idea. And I saw this at the high school that you guys are, want to do it on a probationary period. I think that's a really good idea. I think probably the two questions I have is, or I would need to see because I know the community, the reason, part of the reason we haven't done this in the past is because of the influx of students into local businesses is a major issue. So I would want to see a letter from these local businesses saying, hey, I sign off on this idea in order for me to be on board. And also besides the fact that you guys are going to be adults, what's another reason, why do you feel the need to have open campus for lunch?
So some of the stuff that we talked about when deciding what bill we wanted to like actually do was that it kind of is also like based on nutrients or like amount of food. Cause schools don't always have like, it's not bad food, but there's not a lot of like a big serving size. And especially for like student athletes, when they are like going to school at seven in the morning and then getting home at five at night and having a small lunch portion is not enough to keep them going throughout the whole day. And when we talked to a bunch of seniors about this. And when we talked to a bunch of seniors about this, we had them fill out a Google form. That's what a lot of people had said and then also just like. Obviously, the responsibility aspect of it of them wanting more freedom and like having the. Responsibility to do that and like be able to go and get food from other places. Or even like go home if they needed to get their own food, anything like that, just, yeah.
I think in addition to that, um, it gives students like an opportunity to kind of like refresh themselves. I know senior year could be pretty stressful because like you just wanna be done and like you're so close yet, like you still have a whole year to go through. So having a chance to like go home and like get a full meal, like refresh and then come back. A lot of teachers might appreciate it because they might be in a better attitude, like have a better attitude towards them and towards like, like being motivated for schoolwork. But also like, um, there's kids that sit alone and sometimes even like, uh, the cafeteria area can get a little overcrowded. Like the lines can get really long or there's just not enough tables for people to sit at. And I think that if we had off campus lunch, then it'd give more of like. Uh, an opportunity for um, teachers to be able to keep the halls clear because I know that sometimes is a struggle. Cause there's, um, you know, the hallway like that, the more recent one that was built on, um, where like the science and like, uh, languages. I know a lot of students sit in that area, although they try to keep them out because there's classrooms and it can be disrupting. And I think if we had less students in the building. They could learn to, they, they'd be able to minimize it better. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, one, one last thought is, I'm on, I'm on the same side as what Derek and Charlie are saying. Like I can just envision. You being stuck in the drive through at Taco Bell. You got five minutes left and you got four or five people in your car.
Right.
And everyone's getting gordita crunch, value meals or whatever. Is there, is there?
That's not your regular.
Is there a thought here where we can rely on the district in a way? And then I know this is asking, maybe asking a little too much, but providing like sack lunches to go. Like seniors, all right, you wanna get off campus, you wanna go clear your head, you wanna go take a drive and come back or whatever. But you don't have time to go get stuck in the drive through at Taco Bell or can River Canyon or wha- whatever. I mean, the options are limited up by the high school, right? Like where, where kids gonna go? So those businesses are gonna get overwhelmed there. You got thirty minutes. Probably eat lunch.
Yeah.
Right? So is there a way that we could partner with nu- the nutrition department and say? We have lunches to go that day.
That's all right.
I don't know, just a thought. Cause I like, I remember being in high school and thinking, man, leaving, that'd be really cool. I don't really remember why, but it was just like, that would be cool. Right? And but, but thirty minutes is, is that, that's gonna be a. Tight timeline to take, um, no matter where you're going, so.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah. That, yeah, I like that actually a lot. Um, the only question I would have about that is, uh, money wise, like would we be able to support like? Would it be like coming from the cafeteria or would it be, yeah, okay, then, yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So I just happen to be the superintendent in Zilla, one of the districts that you um, looked upon. It's a, it's a different number, sheer number of students who are seniors and a lot easier to manage. I can remember one of the challenges there um, were other students in cars. Okay, students A that were eligible to leave and those that were not eligible to leave became a huge problem to manage. In your research, did you, did you find out anything about that? Because at one time I know that in Zilla it was limited to. Only the student who had the parent permission could be in the car to leave. They could not take any other students with them. So did you find anything else about that?
Um, the only thing that I see that we have on our form right now is that if they are caught with other people. Or if they are like breaking their, like the rules of their, what they have, they would lose the privilege. Um, but other than that, I don't see anything about it.
I mean, plus like we could have the doors monitored because I know like we have like celebrate success um, at like the ends of like different trimesters. And we do have teachers um, in front of a lot of doors. So I think that we could also probably like manage it through that as well.
Yeah, just to go, to go back, it wasn't the, it wasn't the managing of the in and out into the fist, into the building. It was the managing of who was going to get into individual other students' cars. And, and then the liability that that driver takes on for the passengers if, within that car. Um, and then it, it became problematic with parents who, who did not want their children going in other students' cars. So it was fine if the, if the student was a friend, a well-known person of the family. But if it wasn't and the student was gonna go off with somebody else, that was where it ran into problems. And that's where it became almost impossible for the administration. Or those people to manage to understand who was, who could go with who. And so they really limited it to, yes, you can go off campus at lunch. Yes, if you were a senior, you could do it, but you, you as an individual only could be the one, only person in that car. Unless it was like a sibling that was also.
So, um, are you like, okay, this might sound silly, but if we were to in, like. If this were to continue on and we were to talk about it more, um, do you think in your opinion, would it be better to only say like yes or no? Unless it's like a sibling, you can't leave in a certain person's car or like talk more to the parents about it, like. Get, put out a form if your kid can do it, yes or no?
I, I don't know. Okay, it, it's, uh, I'd have to give some thought to that. I was waiting really to, to see what came about. Uh, this, this afternoon evening about what you're presenting, but uh, I'll have to give some more thought to that.
I, I think Kevin, that's a really valid point. I mean, the cross country girls know what happened at practice earlier this season. With that accident, um, that's one of our policy updates tonight is uh, riding specifically with employees on. In the district or private vehicle. Um, and so there are serious lawsuit concerns there with the school district. And somehow we would have to be able to protect the school district from lawsuits if students were riding with other students. Basically, once you leave that ground, the school district has to be absolutely absolved. Um. I think that's a very valid point.
Just because the kid and the kid's parents signed off, if they damaged someone else, that person that just grandma walked across the road didn't sign a waiver. So it is very hard to completely insulate the school from any potential liability.
And, and I also know that there are struggles at the high school right now with parking enforcement. So there are a lot of students who have paid for passes. And they show up to school and their spots are taken up. So I, I'm not saying this isn't a great idea because I actually like it. I, I mean, I graduated here. Thirty years ago and this was an issue back then. Um, but I, I do think there are some major considerations that uh, would have to be resolved before we can move forward.
So you came here and presented, which you did a great job and thank you all for being here and taking this project on. It's, it's, it's definitely worthy the work and the time you've put in. To it. For a lot of reasons, not only for the, the closed campus idea, but for all the things you're gonna, you've learned about. The process and in our case of policy. What next? And, and what are you hoping to, to have the board do by bringing this to them tonight?
Um, so uh, we know you guys have like smaller meetings that aren't as like open. We were wondering if there was like. Ever like a tighter opportunity where we could go in more in-depth with it and like have like a conversation with you guys like. Um, not in like such like a formal setting, uh, to kind of get those ideas out. And make sure like we're addressing those things that need to be addressed, um, as well as like safety stuff like with the liability. Like figuring out uh, the best way to approach that. Um, uh, basically just putting the idea out there. Like I said, when we came, we didn't know we're gonna be getting feedback, so this is great. Um, but that's. A lot of what we've looked at and a lot of what we have and your guys' uh, feedback has been really beneficial for what we've been looking at, so.
Uh, we also intend to get more feedback from the community. Cause we still have like forms that we want filled out and like someone over here had asked for an actual like copy of the. Um, restaurant signing off on that. So we definitely intend to get more feedback to make sure that we're making this the. Best bill that we can make it.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming. I, I know the school board uh, really appreciates hearing from students. Um, I, I, I'm impressed by how well you responded to our questions. Uh, uh, this is a whole different environment than your school classroom, so I commend your instructor, your teacher at the school. Uh, and your classmates for, for bringing this to us in a very professional manner. So thank you very much for.
Thank you guys so much.
All right, um, we will uh, continue to consider that uh, at future meetings. Yeah, if you don't have to stay, if you don't want to, those, those you probably may wanna check out here at this point. Uh, thin, thin things down a little bit. You're welcome to go off campus now. It is a shame. I think I'm the only, well, Kevin and I are the only people from the before times, uh. Which was at the, where we are right now at the pre- previous high school. You could walk down the street to Kings Row and get a hamburger and come back in half an hour very easily. Um, Kings Row specials were very, very famous for that, yeah. Um, so uh, we'd love to see if we can make something happen there, but there are still obviously some kinks to work out and some things to discuss. Uh, we do have a couple of people signed up for public comment. Um, I don't think there's anything that's been sent in to us for public comment. The first uh, group, and thank you so much for being patient with us, we appreciate it, is Mr. Morales's history class is signed up. Are you here to speak on anything? That was them. Oh, that was Mrs. Morales. I have Mr. Morales. Okay, got it. Sorry then, Nikki Gruders is our next person. Thank you Nikki for being so patient with us.
Okay, my name is Nikki Gruders. I'm a nursing student at Heritage University and I was born and raised in Zilla. Um, I've lived here my whole life, um, and I am a mother of three boys. I currently serve on our faculty's nursing department committees such as curriculum and policies committees. Um, as a nursing student and as a parent, I care deeply about the health and wellbeing of our students. Um, and my children. One area that directly impacts their health is the food. Um, that they are served at school. My children often eat breakfast at school and at, um. Lunch, they eat school lunch. Um, my children, um. Need their, their food. It's not a heavy reliability. They choose to eat at home and then they also go to school and eat. And oftentimes after school, they come home and they're like starving. Um, so according to USDA's MyPlate guidelines, children should be eating a variety of foods daily with half their plate consuming of fruits and vegetables. Um, these foods provide essential nutritions that perfor- pu- support physical development, cognitive function and long-term health. However, many school meals fall short of these recommendations, often relying on processed foods with limited fresh produce. I know the district is making great changes in the food. Um, I've seen it on the lunch menu. Um, but I urge you to improve the quality of breakfast, increasing the variety of foods. With less processed foods, more farm to, farm-fresh foods. This approach not only enhances nutritional values, but also supports our local economy and for fosters community partnerships. The consequences of poor nutrition in schools are well documented. Children who lack access to healthy meals are more likely to experience obesity, type two diabetes, academic challenges due to a decreased concentration. And energy levels. By making thoughtful changes to our school food program, we can positively influence. Both student health and academic performances. Our children are vocal in about what they eat. If we can improve the quality of food that they receive at school, we may have the opportunity to influence the foods that they eat at home and create healthier habits. I believe that with community support and district leadership, we can make meaningful changes that benefit, benefit every student in Zilla. Thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you very much Nikki. And I'm, I'm, uh, unfortunately unlike the thing that we just had, we can't really, because it wasn't on the agenda, we can't really have a conversation with you about it. Um, but we may uh, uh, contact you for some follow-up questions and some information to share.
That would sound wonderful. I, I think a lot of um, what you know, the students shared about meals and everything. Um, I have lots of different ideas of ways to help better foods and give more options. Um, you know, I graduated thirteen years ago, so. Um, I'm learning a lot as a parent who has kids in sports too and those needs and those changes.
Great, thank you again for coming. I real, really appreciate it. All right, our next item on the agenda um, is the approval of regular meeting minutes. Um, from the October twenty-third meeting, I will move that we approve the meeting minutes from. Uh, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, all those in favor signify with an I. I, all those opposed and abstained? All right, great. The meeting minutes are approved for twenty, uh, October twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five. The next item is our consent agenda. Um, and on this consent agenda, there are a number of items, starting with the Human Resources Action Sheet. Including the payroll goods and services for November. Um, one policy first reading on field trips. And then a number of policy uh, updates, second readings. Um, I'm, I'm going to ask that. Two of the items and we'll get to that. I'm kind of giving Chris a second to come back in to talk about human resources. For the policy updates for the second reading before we get to vote on that, I'm going to suggest. Um, that we pass those policy updates, second reading and adoption with the exception of board self-assessment. And standards for individual school directors until such a time as our new um, board member is seated. Uh, and sworn in and can participate in the um, a voting and understanding of. Board self-assessment and standards for individual school directors. Um, so I'll, I'll kind of stop there and maybe we can move through the human resources. There comes Chris. The Human Resources Action Sheet. Chris, uh, we have a short HR action sheet here as we move through the consent agenda, very short. Uh, is there, is there anything that we need to know about from that document? Great. Uh, is, are there any questions or comments about the um, HR action sheet? All right, next we're moving on to the payroll goods and services. Um, this is a uh, a monthly update on the, what's going out. Um, is there anything there, Chris, that we should uh, pay attention to and take your time if you need to?
Yeah, I've already looked through these in detail. Um, I did my, my audit, my monthly audit of these. And um, I don't have anything to highlight tonight.
Great. Are there any uh, questions about the payroll goods and services? All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is a policy update on field trips, excursions and outdoor education. This includes what um, a board member, uh, uh, Iverson mentioned, what Derek mentioned. About uh, sports teams are included under this policy. Kevin, will you explain just briefly what this policy is intended to do?
It's simply to keep uh, students out of private vehicles. It's really, really pretty straightforward and, and. Weirdly enough, this, we found out about this by looking at this policy. Actually prior to the accident happening and then realizing what is currently in our policy. And, and then the accident obviously just magnified the language here that we felt it was necessary. Uh, to get some change in language in there. So this is what we're bringing to you in the first reading with that language. Pretty straightforward though, Chris?
We just, during the process of, I was meeting with Joe Coscart, our director of transportation services, Lori Ozanich. Um, our nutrition director and this, that's when we came across this. We were actually working on the procedure side of things and all the forums and the timelines and we. We came across that and we're like, oh, I, we didn't even realize that was in the policy, so.
So can I ask with, I know that students, uh, say like the swim team, like those students have to travel to the. Cause we don't have a pool, yeah, they go to Lions. And don't we, and probably cross country too, there's a waiver that. And I know when we fill out the, uh, like I have a student athlete and you have to fill it out to give permission to ride in other students' cars, so. We shouldn't have been asking for permission to do that, or is that separate?
That's something that I'll need to follow up on because that Jamie made a good point about the liability. If you have a parent permission slip signed, but then the driver hits a pedestrian, you know, we don't have any waiver from that pedestrian that gets hit. So then, um, that student's liable first and foremost, and then it comes back on the district. So the district liability is still there. Even with those signed permission slips.
Yeah, well, then I'll just point that out then.
Yep, I'll fa- I'll follow up on that.
Just one quick question on that, the, the language.
Change makes plenty of sense when it comes to private vehicles. I was just curious, the other struck-out line on RCW six-seven-point-two-zero? What is?
Yeah, we didn't think that it was pertinent to put parks, bathing beaches in public camps. I have no idea, but the RCW references it.
I was just curious, uh, how does this have to do with vehi- vehicles? So, uh, thank you for the clarification.
Thanks.
Uh, for our athletes that are, that are students here, are you, are you following along with what the change will be? Okay, okay, great. All right, um, let's move to the, uh, final, no, second to last item on the agenda, which is policy review. Um, starting with sixty-two-twenty and moving all the way through thirty-four twen- no, excuse me, through five thousand, um, policy five thousand on recruitment, selection and evaluation of staff. Um, are there any, um, comments or questions on these policies after we've had a chance to look at them from our last meeting?
And I think your suggestion to hold eighteen-twenty and eighteen-twenty-one until Larry is seated is.
Okay.
I also like to, uh, hold off on five thousand and sixteen-thirty.
And, uh, what's the, uh, wha- wha- what, what would be the reason for that?
Um. So eighteen-twenty-one is, uh, that one is being held off, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So on five thousand, my concern is with some of the language. So for example, assure that students are grown and meet their full potential. Uh, I feel like that removes the responsibility from administrators to ensure that the students are being successful. Um, so it, it shifts it from having accountability for student performance, in my opinion, to ensuring that staff members are highly effective. So, so in, when I read that, I'm looking at, we're, we're saying the student performance doesn't matter. It's just that the superintendent is looking at it and saying that the, um, employees are good to go. And we're here for student performance first and foremost. And so I, I just wanna make sure that the board has some way to provide oversight toward administration for academic performance. And I feel like that's being removed in the language that's being taken out here.
Yes.
I could be wrong.
This is five thousand?
This is, uh, yes, five thousand.
Okay. And are you talking about the first paragraph, the, under the stroke, strike?
Correct, where it's stricken out, assure that students grow and meet their full potential.
Okay, I see what you're saying right there, that you would like to have that continue to be included in the policy.
I, I would like to make sure that the school board can provide oversight if that's not being met. And, and. Yeah, I mean, you look through our board policies, there's a lot of really ambiguous language in there. Yeah, and, and I think per the superintendent contract, I think, uh, per other board policies, I mean, we have to trust, and I know Dan, you've repeated this at meetings, that, um, we have to trust that, that the superintendent can look at the principals and analyze them properly and the principals with their teachers and other district. I mean, there has to be a certain amount of trust, but when it comes down to it, we look at, um, the student scores as, at least I do, as the metric by which we're, are measuring student success. And, and so I just wanna make sure that the board can provide some oversight to that degree.
So what, where it says staff are recruited and selected to ensure that all staff members are highly effective, you feel it have necessary skills and experience to meet the learnings of students, that that doesn't cover the, the highly effective part seems like it would cover the part that's been stricken.
Yeah, I would, I would say I agree with that.
But that, that would mean that it's okay to have that part taken out if we say highly effective is defined by assure students grow and meet their full potential in district programs? That seems like it's redundant to say highly effective and the previous comment or the part that's been taken out. And I don't know why that first line has been taken out. This is WASDA policy, I'm guessing, Kevin?
Yeah, these, all of these that have to do with the board, um, are all connected to the WASDA board standards that were updated. And this is how they were brought. This, there wasn't anything that, uh, internally within our school district that we struck or revised. These are all came directly from WASDA.
We don't have to wholesale adopt what WASDA says.
You do not, no.
And just, just like on, uh, I know I'm bouncing back and forth on policy eighteen-twenty-one, it's an optional policy. According to the, the little summary sheet that we got, that's included in the agenda.
So, um, I, I'm, Derek, just so I'm, I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. Which, if, if we're gonna change the language for this, if we're not gonna adopt it, and maybe we wanna talk about the language a little bit more at the next meeting, what part would you like to see included and what part are you okay with not being in that, um, in that policy, the?
Uh, I mean, if we were to add back that we assured that students grow and meet their full potential, I, I'm good with adding that back in.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And, and I think probably in combination with that, when we go to policy sixteen-thirty, um, I know that, uh, I've made Facebook posts regarding this. The superintendent will have the opportunity for confidential conferences on no less than three occasions per year. So if we're not having confidential conferences with the superintendent, how can we accurately, um, review him? Or provide that feedback? I think we need to have at least one. Uh, maybe it doesn't need to be three, but I think we need to have some sort of confidential, um, executive session or whatever means we can to discuss what we're seeing as members of the board. Because the way that it's happened the last two years is we get, uh, we get a little paper that we fill out, uh, write to, um, review the superintendent. And I would like to have more discussion. Just like we had tonight, I feel like this was really beneficial to have these types of discussions versus just doing everything, you know, over email or, or in secret.
I, uh, I don't think, I think we have had, uh, executive sessions where we've met with Kevin to discuss the annual performance review. If, that's my memory is the last.
I, I don't re- recall since I've been seated on the board, I don't remember having any of those.
I, I know there was one, there was one meeting, I walked into the PD room and Kevin said, oh, this is my evaluation. I was like, oh, I guess I don't need to be at this executive session, so I left.
Yeah, we did a executive session. The, the first part of what you're saying is accurate where we did the, uh, filled out the questionnaire, returned it to Dan. Dan sort of summarized them and then we did have a closed door and discussed it amongst that. And maybe that's not, maybe you'd like more of an open back and forth, because that was, but that, I would, I would consider that as executive session that we sat through, had that discussion.
Okay. I, I guess, so, so what I'm saying is when I look at these two policies, I, I wanna have some sort of vehicle for us to, because we're only in charge of the superintendent in the school district. I wanna make sure we don't lose that vehicle as a school board to review the superintendent and through him, especially with administration, affect change in other administrative duties.
Uh, okay, um, I, I would, uh, I, I guess we can talk about that here and, and have a discussion or maybe a vote to see what, which ones we wanna table or which ones we wanna move forward with. I'm, I myself, I'm comfortable with the language of sixteen-thirty, um, because we do meet with the superintendent at least once a year. And I think we meet twice a year because we have a half yearly performance, or at least we gather information from Kevin about, uh, progress during the year. And that, to me, seems like a sufficient, um, evaluation period for, for, uh, superintendent. Um, so I'm, I'm okay with sixteen-thirty. Um, and I, I might, myself, just since we're having this conversation about whether to table things, I'd be okay if we tabled five thousand until we were more comfortable with the language about, um, uh, staff are recruited and selected to and what follows that. I think if we wanna get additional input, uh, on that, maybe we could, we could table that.
So, so what would be the proper way for me to provide my input without violating the Public Records Meetings Act? So for example, if I wanna go in and say, hey, I would, I would like to see this language changed in this policy, how do you propose that I do that?
Uh, would you have languages that you have ready tonight?
No, I don't.
Oh, I guess you would.
So that's why I'd like to table this stuff.
Yeah, so I would say you table it and then the next time that we bring this up before the board, you would say I have some alternative or alternate language that I'd like to see in place of the language that's currently here. And then we would vote on replacing the language that's currently in the policy or opposed policy.
And would that be more appropriate, Dan, after the first reading? Then when we get to the second reading?
I, I.
Would all be okay with the language in those?
So if you are ready, we get the first reading from the, uh, policies prior to the first reading at the meeting. So yeah, that, I mean, if you're ready to go at the first reading rather than at the second reading, that, that makes a, a lot more sense to me. Um, to be able to handle any revisions to it before we get to the second reading and have to decide whether to table things or not. So we could maybe move on more with more of a, a progress there. Um, uh, so, uh, Derek, do you wanna make a motion to table a number of these and then we can vote on that? And if it passes, we'll table them. And if it doesn't, we'll make a motion to, uh, and I, I would be prepared to make an alternative motion if that doesn't pass for tabling some, but not all of the ones maybe that you're interested in table.
Okay, so, so I move that we, um, table code sixteen-thirty, code eighteen-twenty-one and code five thousand, just those three on my behalf until December.
Okay, and are there any more comments or questions about that proposal of tabling sixteen-thirty, which is evaluation of superintendent, eighteen-twenty-one, which are standards for individual school directors, and five thousand for recruitment and selection of staff? You, Derek, you don't wanna include eighteen-twenty board self-assessment?
Uh, no, I know you mentioned that earlier.
But you'll le- but you, you, you wanna include that?
I'll, I'll include that in the motions.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, great. So those four are being proposed to be tabled until, uh, our next business meeting, when the, um, a new board member will be sworn in. Um, and we may have a chance to come up with alternate language to, uh, put in place of that. That sound good?
I guess one alternative, Dan, just throwing it out there, if there's possible to just not pass E of the consent agenda, all of it. I don't know if there's any time-sensitive policies in there that are gonna change between now and December. If it's gonna save any time and effort and going through each one individually and voting on each, we could just table all of them until December.
We're, we're, we're checking right now if there's stuff that we need to do right now tonight. Yeah. So there's at least one, which is sixty-two-twenty bid or request for proposal requirements that we need to have, uh, taken care of.
All the rest of them might, there is no, has to happen tonight. So you could, you could reverse it and we would say we would table all policies except sick or sixty-two-twenty.
I'll amend my, uh, my motion. So I move that we, um, move or delay all of the policies with the except, exception of sixty-two-twenty. So we're going to approve that one tonight and table the other policies until, uh, December.
Okay, any other comments or questions about that proposal? Uh, so what, we will, whoop, sorry. Yes, please. Perfect. Great, yep. Um, and we are now going to, to vote on just on that motion to table those rather than on the entire consent agenda. Sound good? Okay, uh, all those in favor of tabling that motion signify with an I.
I.
I. All those opposed? And abstentions? Okay, so we will table, uh, those policy reviews, second readings until our next meeting in December, where we only have one meeting, now that I think about it. Um, it's with the exception of draft sixty-two-twenty. So, uh, we have one final note here, which is overnight travel requests. Um, this is the Western Band Clinic in Sea-Tac with Mr. Madsen. Um, and he is taking, I'm opening the document right here, eight students, for a, uh, uh, an out-of-district overnight travel request. Any comments or questions about that travel request? Okay, great. Um, I will move that we approve the consent agenda, including item sixty-two-twenty from the second reading of the policy updates. Uh, Human Resources Action Sheet, Payroll Goods and Services, and the first, I guess we're not approving the first reading, but the first reading and the overnight travel request. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Great. All those in favor signify with an I.
I.
I. All those opposed? And abstentions? Okay, great.
Jennifer, great job.
Yeah, no kidding, Jennifer. Uh, man, we got the Roberts Rules of Orders. We're flexing our muscles here, though. All right, we're moving on now to, um, a resolution. This is an administration resolution twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-two, which is certification of twenty-twenty-six excess property taxes. Chris, will you explain what that, uh, resolution entails?
Sure, sure. This is an annual resolution that, uh, is presented to the board. And it is required under RCW eighty-four fifty-two oh twenty for the school board to certify the amounts to be levied in the, the next calendar year. So for this, um, for the twenty-twenty-six, uh, year, we have included the budget, adopted budget with those amounts listed. One of the things that, um, I do before I bring this resolution to the board is I look at our most recent, uh, assessed valuation amounts and I make sure that although the, the, the voters have approved the dollar amount that can be collected, I still want to make sure, and Kevin and I, um, go over this every time, is that we don't exceed the projected rate per thousand that we promised taxpayers when we go out um, and ask for approval on a bond or a levy. So, um, this, at this point with the, the assessed value that came in, we're projected at a dollar sixty-two per thousand and the voters, we promised the voters it would be a dollar sixty-five per thousand or less. So we're fine. The only year that we rolled back the amount that we were gonna collect was in twenty-twenty-one. We exceeded the rate per thousand and so we felt it was necessary to roll the levy back and not collect the full amount because we said we would stay under a certain do- uh, rate per thousand. So that was the only year in my twenty-six years that we ever had to roll back a levy collection. So that's what this resolution represents. And, um, I'm required to process it to the county commissioners and the county elections office, uh, tomorrow for their approval by the end of November, so.
Uh, and you need approval of this resolution in order to do that?
Yes.
All right, so I move that we approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-two. Is there a second? And are there any questions or comments about this resolution? Okay, all those in favor of passing this resolution signify with an I. I. All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, good. Do you drive it down? Do you fly it in? How do you?
The first year I was thinking, do I have to drive to Ellensburg to give them this resolution? I don't. I can scan and email it.
Magic of email. All right, we'll move on now to the, thank you, Chris, for doing that. We appreciate it. We'll move on now to the Student Board Representative Update. Uh, let's start at the end of the table with our Junior Board Representatives. Is there anything you'd like to add to the good of the order here? What do you think about, um, letting people go off campus? I'll start with that question. We did, we heard from some other people, but we didn't hear from the juniors. What do the juniors think of that proposal?
I think it's a good idea.
What, what, what's good about the idea?
Um, I like, um, how they talked about how it's gonna give them more responsibility because I think that's a big deal. Um, like especially from like private school and stuff, like they would just like, I went to Montessori and they would just give us all the homework for the day. We would be, still be in class, but they'd be like, this is all the stuff you have to get done, like get it done on your own time. And so I think that's a very important skill to learn, so, yeah.
This is a, uh, topic that I've heard of before from my first period, which is a public speaking class. And one of the current seniors in that class, she, um, said the same idea, but with, uh, less evidence. And I think it would be really cool. It gives them more responsibility and it. and it teaches the s- school board that we are able to trust them as young adults.
What do you see as the downsides? Make, make the opposite case.
The car reliabilities. Cause I don't think everyone's going to be able to leave and come back in time.
I think, I mean, that's, that's for me is a big question. Thirty minutes is tight. I mean, that is just Joe's idea of having grab and go or something. But that's a tough turnaround for sure. Uh, uh, do, do you have anything else to add in terms of an update? Okay, uh, Claire and Charlie.
Oh, yes, I can go. Um, personally, I am opposed to the idea of having an open campus lunch. I just think it's too much of a, um, I, I personally think it's too much of a liability to put on students. And, um, you know, having to have more work done to like cover the, um, the repercussions that could happen because of students not following the guidelines. And I do, like, I, I do understand where students are coming from. I mean, it would be great to have a refresh just to step away from school, but, um, unfortunately, I just do not think that, um, that if this were something to be put in place, I don't think it would be, um, feasible for like a long term. And I just, I just don't believe that, um, it would be, I don't believe that the benefits would outweigh the downsides of it.
Yeah. Um, I definitely see like the positive sides of it, um, but I do believe that it would be more of like, maybe like a one-time thing, like one time a year, twice a year. Um, just something a little less common than every Friday. Um, or like every day for that instance, like every trimester. I just think maybe if you like once or twice a year with maybe the same stipulations, but I mean, as Claire brought up, there's a lot of potential consequences that could come from this. Um, like you guys mentioned, like there could be car accidents with it and that's a really scary thought, just for like, not only for the school district, but, but for families who are signing these waivers um, of when these kids are going off campus.
How well monitored is it right now? Are there people consistently sneaking off or is that not really a thing or?
Well, there's always people sneaking off campus. Like, they'll always get caught and then they're like, they're like, they go like, sorry. They'll like go to lunch detention, but like they don't even go to lunch detention. So like, there's really no consequence, um, for sneaking off campus or for doing something like that. Um, I know a lot of kids just order food off of their phones and have it delivered to the school. Um, so I mean, that's kind of a beneficial way, but, um, I mean, one thing that kids really love is their cars. Um, and they love being in their cars. Um, so I think maybe if it's like, I don't know, like that's just where they want to be, so that's like, and we're not allowed to be in our cars anyways.
You can't go from the building just to sit in your car for lunch, right?
Um, no, because, um, there are instances with like drugs.
Yeah, I mean, I, that was one of the other things I didn't ask him about, but I.
Which causes a lot of problems, um, just for staff, because staff is liable for that since it's on school grounds.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, and just, uh, as an F, kind of as an aside, we had to get a no pre trespassing order for our church to, in order to protect that back parking lot because we were having issues specifically for, with kids from the high school going over there and doing things that we didn't want happening over in the church parking lot. So it's definitely a complicated issue. And so I like the idea of a limited permission, a probation, something like that. I'm not opposed to that, but it's
Well, we all.
Going to need a lot of discussion.
We also have Minga, so like if you have like forty Minga points or whatever, you get like an off-campus lunch with like three friends. So there's also that kind of opportunity that kids can have, um, so.
Great. Uh, are, are there other updates that you'd like to provide for the board? Uh, we really appreciate your feedback, by the way. That's great.
Um, I know someone brought up during conference week, um, just like the idea was proposed, um, having the long day on Monday instead of Wednesday and then every day after that just being a short day. Um, I know that was proposed and I know a lot of students liked that idea as well. So that's just a thought.
What's the advantage of doing it that way instead of the Wednesday?
Um, honestly, I don't really want to get up on a Wednesday like for conference because like, oh, it's a long day. Like I don't really want to deal with the long day. So I mean, just doing it on Monday, um, like the hard day is over with and then you have like the rest of the week to look forward to. Just like, oh, like I get to go home for the rest of the week and there's not really a long day that I have to go through.
And in, in addition, the teachers, like, at least at the high school, Tuesday is like the long day where they spend, uh, until like late hours in the night and I, I'm sure like as, as the daughter of an educator myself, I know that like it's really, really hard to have to get up the next day and, um, work that full day.
Oh, interesting.
And like have, like in the past, like, um, before the COVID nineteen pandemic, I do remember having, um, the day on the Monday and it felt a lot, um, it, it felt like it worked a lot better for conferencing scheduling and then that it would, it just, um, was, it felt more productive for the students instead of them also like treating that Wednesday um, as they did this year with like a half day as well.
We always had a long day. I feel like conferences, you, the whole week used to be a half day years ago.
And then the middle school, high school have Monday and Tuesday night, late nights.
I mean, in terms of.
Oh, Wednesday.
Yeah, so like the long, sorry, the long class day, where, where's the full day? So they go half-day Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then they have their regular late.
Late start.
Full ends.
Yeah, I can't remember that.
Yeah, so this comes down to, uh, the amount of instructional minutes that's required by the state of Washington. And we are very close to not meeting that because of our late start Wednesdays uh, and our half-days for parent conferences. We also have to count in the early release days that we have spread throughout the year in anticipation of breaks like, I think, think, is it Christmas we have a, a half-day? All of that all computes into getting an instructional amount of minutes. And we are, we meet that, uh, by submitting the amount of minutes we have to the state board of education and meet the compliance thing. But we're close. So if we were to have, um, half-days all the way through that, throughout that week, that may potentially put us in not meeting the instructional minute requirements. Yeah, I, it's, it is pretty thin. Yeah, and so what, I will, I will tell you that parent conferences in the last couple of years, the structure that the district uses for parent conferences, uh, is being considered to be looked at differently. And maybe that's me, uh, who, who looks at parent conferences in Seela as being very traditional and have been this way for a long, long, long period of time. Um, we are in talks with, uh, our, um, teachers association about the idea of parent conferences, uh, being different for that entire week, uh, and not having half-days. Maybe look at a full day of parent conferences and have three full days of instruction that week and two days of parent conferences. Um, yeah, sorry, Charlie. Yeah, yeah, you don't have to worry about it, but, um, part of that even requires us to submit a waiver request, uh, to OSPI to be able to do that. But I will tell you that we're, we're having some initial, um, discussions about how parent conferences may look differently. Our high school and our middle school, um, use two nights of parent comp, two evenings to meet the needs of the parents, uh, where our elementaries only have one night. And so that, that brings about some complexities with regards to the work day for employees who are in the same position, but just work at a different grade level. So, um, I don't know if we'll get to the point of making, uh, some changes to that. You have to start early. Uh, there's actually a resolution then back in twenty-twenty-three was brought to the board and you signed it in anticipation of potential changes to parent conferences. That's part of the requirement that needs to go to SPI for approval. Uh, we'll see where that goes, but we do realize that parent conferences, um, although they're very well atten- in attended, and that's the one thing I have to keep in mind is the parent conferences are not for the staff. They're not for the students. They're really for the parents. And if we're getting great turnout to our parent conferences, then we have to keep that in the back of the mind because we're, we're, even at our secondary schools, we are getting very, very high percentage of participation in parent conferences. Yeah, I know, but that, that's helpful. Yeah, very helpful.
Uh, uh, Charlie, great to bring that up right now and Claire, great to bring that up now, but very timely for sure. So thank you very much. All right, we're moving on now to the, yes, and if you need to leave, uh, you're, uh, the, um, student board representatives. Yep, have a good evening. Uh, we are now moving on to the item number eight, associate superintendent for district operations. We have kind of a brief twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five year-end highlights and an enrollment update.
Awesome. Yes, this is a very high-level, uh, summary of what the um, highlights are for the twenty-four, twenty-five year-end closing. The full presentation will be brought to the board on December thirteenth or eleventh. Eleventh. So, um, we just wanted to give you a little bit of information. As a reminder, our deadline for year-end closing is always the October, right around October twenty-fifth, which we met. Um, the E S D, we submit our, our year-end report to the E S D. They do an independent review. They got back to us with three or four FYIs, which were pretty, uh, minor things that we fixed. And now, uh, Kevin certified our report. Um, it went to OSPI today. The deadline is Saturday. So got that in on time. So this gives you just a very high-level summary. So as a reminder, for enrollment, the projection for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year was thirty-six nineteen. Our actual year-end average was thirty-six oh two. Reminder, we're funded based on year-end average. So our projection, every year we want to project what we think the year-end average is going to look like. And we use that statistical method on, uh, survival rate from one grade to the next. So that was, represents just under seventeen under projection. As a reminder, FT, every FTE is worth right around ten thousand dollars. So that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars we weren't able to collect being under projection. So we prefer to be over projection, but not too far over, so we don't impact class sizes. So revenues, um, we ended the year receiving sixty-four point five million in revenues, which was a one point seven million less than what we had budgeted. We always budget a good amount of capacity on both sides of the budget for the unforeseen grants that we may get and enrollment and all those other things that may come through. So we were, that was basically unused capacity that we didn't, uh, need for on the revenue side, expenditure side, we landed at sixty-five point six million in expenditures, which was one point nine million less than budget. So we definitely have some carryovers and, um, including our nutrition program and some other programs and also unused capacity on the expenditure side. Transfers, this is the second year in a row that we have not transferred funds from the general fund to capital projects. Um, we had, as you all know, we had a longstanding practice, um, of transferring, uh, in the early years. In my first ten years here, we transferred eight hundred thousand a year and then we moved to four hundred thousand a year. But the last two years being difficult budget years, we've cut that out. So something that needs to be discussed again moving forward because after we get done with these two projects, I'll talk about that in a minute. We'll have just under a million dollars left and we have other projects that are coming up that we'll need to do. So, um, also the cash reserves. So we ended the year at ten point, just under ten point six million. Um, the actual deficit, uh, we budgeted a one point three million dollar deficit. We landed at a one point one million dollar deficit. So two hundred thousand dollars, um, less than what we thought we were going to be in the red, which is a good thing. Again, ten, just under ten point six million, which represents, uh, sixteen, uh, sixteen percent, sixteen point one four percent. Um, the board parameter is eight percent. Eight percent would be five point two million. So we're basically double that in our cash reserve. But as we all know, we don't want to keep dipping so low that we end up, we need to get a balanced budget here in the next two years to keep, be sustainable for the future. Um, so the breakdown of the fund balance, we have unreserved fund balance of eight point, little under eight point four million, which is twelve point eight one percent of the expenditures, actual expenditures and re, the reserved amount is two million one eighty-four, which is three point three three percent. Um, included in the reserved amount is all the carryovers. We also have, uh, capacity built into the reserved amount for a potential transfers to cap projects. So we put five hundred thousand in there for a potential transfer moving forward and also five hundred thousand dollars to help, um, subsidize the special ed program. Most districts run in the red in special ed, so we try to keep some money in reserve for that. Um, carryovers and reserves, you can see that, uh, detail there. Um, we had our building budget carryover. We allow buildings to carry over fifteen percent of just their basic yet allocations. We're down in the reasonable amount now. We used to have buildings, we're carrying over more than that in, uh, the past years. And so we were putting caps on it. Uh, but we don't want to say you can't carry over anything because then we don't want to find buildings to spending to spend. Uh, so we give them a little bit of grace there. Nutrition carryover, five hundred and eighty-one thousand. We did dip into that pretty, uh, good amount to get down to what five eighty-one with our new walk-in freezer and refrigerator unit over at John Campbell. Um, and then the inventories for commodities for nutrition, we have to reserve that amount. Program carryovers, we have some lap high poverty funds. E cap, which is our early childhood education, the preschool. We have our best, which is, uh, mentor funds that we get from the E S D and TK. We had some totaling three hundred and ten thousand in carryovers that are already in our bank account. Those are the ones we reserve. The other ones are claim, spend and claim, which obviously aren't reserved in our cash reserve. Reserve for unemployment pool, we also have money, um, at the E S D one oh five to, uh, help or to pay for unemployment claims. And we keep an amount in there for that purpose. So total carryover, it's just under two point two million. Any questions on the general fund?
I just have a quick question. For the purpose of our board policy, the percent of cash reserve is twelve point eight one, not sixteen point four. Is that correct?
The, the actual, yes.
That's the number we should look at.
It is twelve point eight one. The, the eight percent really pertains to the unreserved.
Unreserved.
Even though the policy doesn't, doesn't actually say that. It just says eight percent. So, and it's, and we remember the policy's been updated to say eight percent at year end.
Okay.
So it, it, it's going to fluctuate during the year based on cash flow. So you want to say, okay, the parameter needs to be a set point in time. So that's what we have at this point.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
And there's a fuller report coming in.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, this is high level.
At the next meeting in December, is that right? Okay, great. Uh, enrollment update.
Um, Derek, did you have a question? Okay, and then cap projects, just real quick and then I'll move to enrollment. The year-end, uh, fund balance for capital projects, seven point three million. The unused state match money, because we did get additional funds on the, that we didn't need on the transportation cooperative, which bumped that bond, uh, unused state match money, uh, reserve up to one, just under one point six million. That money is being expended first and foremost on the turf field. So it'll be exhausted for that project because it was authorized to spend those monies on safety-related projects. And then the non-bond funds are the Wilbur Rep Mount, which is three point nine million. And then the non-bond other is one point seven million. So five point seven million total in, uh, non-bond funds. And so the two projects, as you know, that are in process, the CTE addition and the turf field. At the completion of both of those projects and considering the, the state match money that we'll be receiving on those two projects, we should land just under one million dollars left in the, the cap projects. Now that's all dependent on where, how the project pans out, if we don't run into any, uh, issues with the budget on those. All right, I'll, I'll move on.
We put in a track for a million bucks.
Wouldn't that be nice? All right, enrollment update. So this is as of November. Thank you to Jennifer. She jumped right on this when we had the numbers from the, the count. Um, our number count for November is thirty-five oh nine. So remember that doesn't include running start, uh, open doors and TK, because they're reported separately. Shows a decrease of thirteen FTE from the October count. So we did see a slight decline again and we're expecting to see a slight decline through the, the rest of the year. It especially happens at the end of trimesters. So we have the end of the trimester coming up, so we should, we probably will see a slight drop in December being the, the end of the trimesters, end of November. So when looking at the November twenty-four count to November twenty-five, we experienced a total decrease of seventy-five FTE. The one-year look. Um, when looking at projected enrollment, uh, versus average to date, we're thirty over projection, which is, which is good that we're over projection at this point because we will see that decline over the course of the year. Hopefully we'll stay in a positive position by the end of the year is what we, we can hope for. We're also, we continue to be open to non-resident student applications. There is a board policy on that, as you know. Um, families need to apply. They need to be released from their home district by the superintendent signed off and then they bring it to the new district they want to, uh, apply to. Kevin has to sign off on those, but we have a process that goes out. Counselors check on disciplinary issues and a lot of things before approvals are made. We have to make sure we have space and all that, but we do have space district-wide. Anything you want to add on that, Kevin?
Although we'll lose some students at the trimester, we may gain some students as well.
That's true.
Uh, that, that have been maybe put on hold or have decided to start the school year in their home school district and now they've
worked through the process and now would like to, you know, transfer into our district. So it'll, we'll lose some and gain some. It won't be significant one way or the other, though.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate that. Our next item is item nine, the superintendent report.
Again, just uh, I know we did this at the beginning of the meeting, but Jamie, uh, from the superintendent's perspective, thank you for being a board member and all you've done for all the years. Um, I I think our students um and our community and all the people that have gone through the schools during that time have benefited from you being on the board, so thank you. My report's really, really small. Uh, Dan and Derek, uh, just publicly, you're two are both off to the Wazda Conference to represent the district uh next week. Hope you uh have got everything you need to to feel comfortable about going. Um, when you're there, if things go sideways, which hopefully they won't, you definitely can call Chris or I or Jennifer and we'll get them all straightened out. But more than likely, you'll have an excellent time. It's a new venue for Wazda, being in downtown Seattle and that. And from everything I I've heard from the staff of Wazda, they're really excited and expecting it to be a really good conference. Uh, if you're taking your spouses with you, enjoy the time as well. Um, no, no school, a reminder that uh uh before you know it, we'll be on the Thanksgiving vacation, and we don't have school on that Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. So it'll be an actual three day of no school. One, when we return from Thanksgiving, uh, community forum. We've had to adjust the data a few times with conflicts of school related activities, but we've landed on a date of twelve dash three as a next community forum. It'll be similar, that I'll seek out ideas from from patrons, parents, community members, uh, and try to speak to those. I I will say that the last two have not been well attended. I don't know if that's a sign that is good or bad, but regardless, I'm always been the one to, if it's one person or a hundred, it's gonna be beneficial for the people that decide to show. And uh I feel I have an obligation, if it's one or two, to have those same conversations with those people. And we did have that last time. We are gonna move it um outside of the middle school. It's a it's a, it's not set up, but it it does challenge the um custodial schedule there when you have people in that facility. Um, and so I'd like to kinda take that off of that custodial team and then bring it right here to the boardroom. And the number of people, this room is big enough to be able to handle the crowd that we need. So that'll be the one change. It'll be at six o'clock. And then um again, we're in a, we're coming up on next month in the month of December, believe it or not, and it is a one board meeting month. It is on the eleventh. So other than that, um, thank you again for being board members. And um looking, obviously, having a new member on it on a board means a new board. So a new, new time of change and adjustment for all of us as we we bring in Larry, we congratulate him, although it's not certified and official. Uh, we do know that Larry uh will be, will be joining the board, and we welcome and congratulate him for that. That's my report, and thank you.
Great, thank you, Kevin. Uh, we are in board communications. I think Derek wanted to say something uh first about band instrument.
Yeah, so I'm not expecting any action tonight, but what I did want to, if you would, just take one of those, I was talking to the band director at the high school, and uh he needs some additional funding. Um, his goal has been to get one of the top or to to create a top ten band program here in Washington State, which I wholly support. Um, you can see from this list here, um, first and second pages, he's looking for about two hundred thousand dollars overall. Um, it's a big ask, especially um with our budget deficits, but I do believe that or for me as a board member, putting money in the classroom as close to the students as we can is what is most important. Um, and so as we look at this, I would like to, over the next couple of months, find ways to at least provide some of the funding for these band instruments. I know that Kevin told me that um for their competition in February, they don't have sufficient instruments to perform at a level that would allow them to win. And I would like to make us uh maybe not, if not this year, next year, find a way to make that happen. Um, and Chris, as a request for information, if we could get as a board um maybe the breakdown of income and expense. If not for individual sports, I know that's a huge ask, just in general, how much do we get in the sporting activities? How much do we spend every year? Um, and uh hate to use this word, but maybe provide a per student equitable solution to our students who are in the band and drama programs. Um, just because I do feel like the extracurricular programs provided by the band and drama clubs reach students who are not participating in sports. And so I'd like to see um some money put forth to them. And um Kevin said that they have about ninety-five members who participate in band. They're an integral part of our football and our basketball games especially, in addition to the uh other concerts that they do. Um, and so they reach, other than I think the track team, I think that's the largest extracurricular program that we have. And so I'd like to make sure that we find ways to support it.
And and just to clarify, Kevin you're referring to when you're speaking about Kevin is Kevin Madsen, right? Not this Kevin, but the Kevin that's the band instructor. Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I offer just a offer just a little bit of information on the finances there, just so for informational purposes, Derek? In twenty-three, twenty-four, we did use some of our uh federal ESSR monies to purchase sixty thousand dollars of band instruments at the high school and twenty-five at the middle school. I went back in time, we did have some allocations early on sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. Some of those may have been cut through the budget cutting cut process. We always have provided for years the instrument repair allocations. You know, the high school gets anywhere from twenty-five hundred to five thousand. And um the middle schools gets around twenty-five hundred. So we are trying to to keep up. It's it's a tough one because this, we try to budget for instrument replacement almost every year in the levy, and then with the cuts, we end up having to just reduce a lot of different things. It wasn't part of the levy when we, when we passed it. So one thing that I would maybe recommend, and uh Kevin and I talked a little bit about this, is when we go out for another levy in twenty for twenty twenty-seven, I think, um, that we think about is there something in the current levy that we're funding that we can maybe get rid of, or or maybe there's a reduction to athletics and activities. I'm not suggesting that, but if that's a decision, then that would be a way to add some funds there. But right now, we don't get any funding from the state for band instrument uh replacement. And I agree, we need to have money to replace instruments because we keep those instruments on hand for kids' use, and it's important, but it's just one of those other things we don't get funding for, but we need to find.
And they're way too expensive for most students.
Oh, yeah, they're crazy.
The the reason we spent the ESSR money on it, in my memory, is for equity purposes.
That's right, yeah.
And and that was approved in twenty twenty-two, but not expended until twenty-three, twenty-four because of delays in instrument shipping, as as far as I understand.
That's correct.
So it's, yeah, it's a tough issue. It's not an easy issue. I mean, I know that there's a public group um trying to do an endowment, which would be my preferred method. It's a gift that gives into the future, independent of the school district, but in the meantime, maybe we can provide a Band-Aid.
I can put some information together for you on this act- activities and athletics.
A Band-Aid to aid the band. Yeah, right. Wordplay. All right, uh, the Board of Directors Communications, other comments or questions? For the good of the order. Uh, I I I have already sent a message to Larry and congratulated him. Uh, congratulations, Joe, as well. Uh, we'll say a little bit more about it then for the next meeting to welcome everybody in, but congratulations to uh to Larry and to Joe for sure. All right, Jamie, you get to do it. Here we go. You ready? One more time. There it is. Meeting adjourned.